Well, good evening and may I welcome everyone to this virtual Winchester City Council meeting of the West of Waterlooville Forum. The time is six o'clock, Tuesday, the first of November 2022. My name is councillor Angela Clare and I am chairperson of the forum. There are a few housekeeping reminders to run through. First of all, may I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you are not addressing the meeting, as this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. May I also advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website and a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details, where the recording will remain thereafter. If you watch the video recording of this meeting on YouTube and wish to read subtitles, you can do this by going to playback and performance in your YouTube settings and checking the boxes to always show captions and include auto-generated captions. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, may I ask that you please indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation by raising your hand, using the hand icon on your screen, and I will invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore I would encourage all members to please keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible. Finally, if any member wishes to leave the meeting at any point, please make themselves known to me by raising their hand and I will answer to the meeting that you are leaving. So thank you for listening to that. And now may I ask the senior democratic services officer to undertake a roll call of members to confirm who is present this evening. So Clare, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So if I can ask you to please unmute your microphone to confirm your attendance when I call your name. So Winchester City Council members, it's councillor Clare.
Thank you.
Councillor Brooke, I believe we may have her apologies this evening. So councillor Cutler, I know he was experiencing difficulties joining.
I'm here in the dark.
Lovely. Thank you very much councillor Cutler for that. Councillor Reed.
Yes.
Thank you. So Havant Borough Council members, it's councillor Bowdell.
Bowdell, present.
Bowdell, thank you. Councillor Lloyd. I haven't actually seen councillor Lloyd join the meeting as yet, so maybe she's a little late, but we'll wait. But councillor Patel.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
Yes, here, present.
Thank you. And moving on to Hampshire County Council members, there's councillor Hughes. Again, I haven't seen councillor Hughes present in the meeting at this time, but councillor Stalard, I'm aware that you're in attendance.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. And for the parish council of Newlands, I've got councillor Berry.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. And councillor Crichton.
Present.
Thank you. Also present tonight, Chair, we have Jenny Upstill, the community development manager for Granger PLC, and councillor Lucille Thompson, the cabinet member for business and culture, who's here to introduce item seven. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clare. But can I now ask you please to confirm the names of officers present this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We have quite a number of officers present today. So we have Julie Pinnock, the service leader for built environment, Steve Lincoln, the service leader for community, Andrew Gostello, the service leader for economy and tourism, Rose Chapman, the principal planning officer, Mark Maitland, the community officer, Toby Ailing, principal planning officer, they're all for Winchester City Council. And from Havant Borough Council today, we have present Jeff Sadler, the planning officer, Alan Downton and David Hayward. Thank you.
Lovely. It's lovely to see so many. Well done. Thank you. So once again, ladies and gentlemen, a very warm welcome to you all. And Clare, can I have any apologies for absence, please?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for absence received from Louise Weaver and Steve Weaver from Havant Borough Council, and as before, from councillor Brooke. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you. And moving on, disclosures of interest. If there are any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business to be transacted, can you please use the chat function now to indicate and I will invite you to speak? Councillor Reed, thank you.
Sorry, get it right. Thank you, Chair. Just to note that I am also a member of the Newlands Parish Council.
Thank you so much. Appreciated. I think that's everyone. Thank you. So moving on, item four on the agenda minutes are on page seven to 12 of the agenda pack. It is recommended that the minutes of the previous meeting held on July the seventh, 2022 be approved as a true and accurate record, should no member object. Any comments, please?
No hands raised at the stage, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So moving on then, any matters arising from the minutes of the meeting from members?
Councillor Reed.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Reed.
I'll put the camera on this time. Thank you, Chair. It's just with regard to, I can't see on the agenda any confirmation of the signage, which was going to be looked into, and also the B215 issues which have been ongoing for at least the last three years. Will these be covered by officers during the course of the meeting? And if so, under what item are they going to be covered?
Very good point. Clare, can you throw any comments on that one for me, please?
I'm not sure. I think maybe Steve, are you more aware of those particular items? And can officers provide an update or Julie on those?
I think in relation to the B2150, I think that, I forget her name councillor, one of the Hampshire County councillors was trying to arrange a meeting and-
Councillor Brooke.
Councillor Brooke. Yes, that's right. Councillor Briggs. Now councillor Briggs, now I can't remember, there was a meeting scheduled and it didn't happen with Hampshire County Council highways officers. Now, I can't remember whether that was because they believed there were no further issues outstanding, or whether councillor Briggs was trying to reconvene that meeting.
Mister Lincoln, I think you are correct. The original meeting did not take place and councillor Briggs was going to try and reconvene it, but we did not hear anything back. So still up in the air, I'm afraid, at the moment.
David has his hand up, Chair.
Oh, thank you, David. Councillor Crichton, thank you.
Right. If everybody can see me, yes, the camera is working. I have a number of items that I want to raise arising from the minutes of the last meeting. I understood we were going to add any other business onto the agenda, so that it wasn't necessary to use the device of raising things under the minutes, where there are fresh matters that need to be discussed by this forum. So if you will allow me, given that there is no any other business, there are two-
There is actually any other business on the agenda this time. We have added that.
Yes, it doesn't appear to be my copy, that's why. In that case-
It's there, so we will deal with comments under any other business, David, if that's all right. Thank you.
That's fine. One question that I ask, as there is no representative from Taylor Wimpey present, I will give you a report on behalf of them. Do you want me to leave that to any other business as well?
That would be lovely. Thank you so much. Appreciated.
Good.
Thank you, Sarah. Councillor Reed, did we answer both your queries, please, or not? I'm not sure.
Thank you, Chair. No, to put it bluntly, all we've done is concentrate on the B2150, which is obviously terribly important to the community in that area. The other one was signage on page 10 of the minutes. So I'm just thumbing my way through it now to try and find it. Oh, where are we? No. Can you find it? Hard copies are really useful. Councillor Berry requested the provision of a welcome signage at Newlands. If you point, if you drive into Waterlooville to the Asda Roundabout, there is not one mention of the community of Newlands. It says Beerwood, which is an advertising title for the big developer, but nothing with regards to Newlands as a community in itself. The chairman agreed that she would discuss this further with officers and provide an update, provide an update. So I think it's down to you, I'm afraid, Angela.
Well, I'm afraid it is, but I can assure, I have checked and I don't think this comes under Winchester, but I'm going to double check with Steve again. Steve, am I correct in that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be 100% sure and I wouldn't want to be quoted on this, so I would happily go away and check. I, my belief is that sign, parish signage would be a parish council responsibility, but I might be wrong, so I will go away and check that.
Yeah.
The signs that I've looked at are mainly county council signs. That is the one that carries the developer's title. But you're right, I think it is a parish councils issue. However, because of the position of it, it is somewhat, shall we say, sensitive? Because if we put it on the, anywhere close to the Asda Roundabout, which is Winchester's, falls within their boundary, as does part of the car park of Asda, and also on the opposite side of the road, the commercial stores there, it's all Winchester element. So it is something that needs to be sorted out. And this is what the forum was really put together for, to help with these joint issues. Doesn't help that we're not meeting as joint members, but that will come along later on.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Steve, could you put it on top of your list as a priority and we'd double check all that out? Thank you so much.
So Chair, councillor Stalard has her hand raised.
Thank you. Councillor Stalard.
Yes, thank you very much. I think I should possibly liaise with Steve Lincoln over the outcome of this, because I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect it might be a county requirement to do such a public sign. If it is, it doesn't matter whether it's in Havant or Waterlooville, because county covers county, end of.
Okay, that's very helpful.
But if Steve and I sort of, Steve, if you, after this meeting, if you get in touch with me, we'll, I'll make some inquiries this end as well. Okay?
Thank you, councillor Stalard.
Very helpful, councillor Stalard. Thank you so much for that. If there are no more hands, Clare, I will move on. Thank you.
Yeah, no more hands, Chair.
Right. So I will move on to agenda item five, public participation. I have received no request from anyone wishing to speak this evening, so I'm going to move straight into business items for the agenda, starting with item six, Granger Progress Report on the West of Waterlooville MDA, found on pages 13, 14 of the agenda pack. Jenny Upstill, all as always, a very warm welcome to you. So may I hand over to you, please?
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add, I'm afraid. It's just if anyone's got any questions regarding the document that was sent out prior to this meeting.
Thank you so much. I will see if we've got hands. Yes, councillor Crichton, thank you.
Evening, Jenny. I just wanted to advise the meeting that we received the email today from David McCarthy with the plans for the northern allotments, which we will now look at. But thanks for sending them on to us.
You're very welcome. Yeah, just so everyone's aware, we're having a meeting with Newlands Parish Council on the 15th of November and hopefully we'll be able to sign off on the plans for the, for the northern allotments and we can crack on.
That sounds good. Thank you so much. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a question that will probably be apt to be answered by an officer with regards to a question awaiting update from Havant Borough Council regarding cemetery land, which has been highlighted in the report. Has any officer got anything they would like to say on that particular base?
Any officer, please, we would welcome. Yes, one person. Who's that? Who's raised their hand, please?
It's David Hayward from Havant Borough Council.
Oh, thank you, Mister Hayward. Over to you.
No problem. Thank you for the question. I'm afraid I can't give a detailed answer, though happy to take that away as an action if that would be helpful. But the cemetery provision is something which officers are looking at in detail and looking to move forward on. I'm afraid I don't know the detail of the matter, but like I said, happy to take that away if that'd be helpful.
Thank you so much. Councillor Reed, did you want to come back on that, please?
If I may, Chair. This was a subject that was of high concern to Havant Borough Council at the time when the MDA first started. Knowing that they were very, very short of land with regard to the cemetery, I understood at that point in time, most of the ceremony, most of the cemeteries within the jurisdiction, apart from Warbleton, were actually full. Is that still the case?
Mister Hayward, can you comment on that?
I don't know, full or sort of nearly full, but certainly, yes, capacity of cemeteries within the borough is a significant issue. And since, I suppose, the, there's a point in time when the MDA was permitted, things like density of plots has obviously decreased the amount that can be provided. So the ability to continue to provide that service is, if anything, more difficult. So yes, I can confirm that the sort of capacity situation is the same or worse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Crichton.
If I can just add to that, I have it on professional advice, having been down to Warbleton Cemetery a couple of days ago to inter the ashes of my late mother-in-law, that I'm told that Havant will actually run out of cemetery space within the next five years unless a new cemetery is open, which of course was one of the reasons why we looked at this particular site. And simply make that comment that it is going to become an urgent matter. And if this area is not to be used as a cemetery, Havant will have to come forward with a proposal for something else, which may be difficult within the areas that are available.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. So Mister Hayward, having heard the comments from councillor Crichton and councillor Reed, may I ask you to keep an eye on this and take our comments away? And perhaps we get a further update for the next meeting or perhaps even earlier, sir?
Absolutely. I think councillor Crichton actually summed up the situation very, very well, actually.
Okay. Thank you so much. Clare, any more hands raised?
No further hands at the moment, Chair, no. Oh, sorry, councillor Cutler.
Yes, councillor Cutler.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification in the, in the report, there's mention of the Stakes Hill Roundabout. I'm not sure exactly where that is. Southern access junction, I understand. But Stakes Hill, what is the work on the discussions of Hampshire County Council on the Stakes Hill Roundabout? Is that part of the section 106 work? Could I just have some clarification? Thanks.
Yep, fine. Who would like to answer that one? Stakes Hill? Hampshire County Council?
I think it's Jenny's report. I'm not sure.
She's just got, Jenny, yes, can you give us any update on that, please, or further?
I am not involved in these discussions, so I'll give you kind of a rough gist idea. I believe that Stakes Hill is in Waterlooville and forms part of the, yeah, the sort of section 106 agreement works. There is some jiggy pokery going around with Hampshire because various designs aren't working properly. It might be better for them to take on the work and us to just give them some money rather than we do it. It is that kind of back and forth that's going on at the moment. But we haven't had any kind of concrete outcome yet. But as soon as we do, we'll let you know. I'm afraid that that's all I know.
Thank you so much. But I see councillor Reed and councillor Crichton have raised their hands, so they might be able to help there. Councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I understood right from the master document that it was Ladybridge Roundabout. I was somewhat surprised to see, thanks to Neil for pointing it out, that Stakes Hill actually hasn't got a roundabout. It's Ladybridge Roundabout where the master plan is designed from. Or are we intending to deviate from the master plan?
Well, there is a roundabout at Stakes Hill, in Stakes Hill Road, but it's right down by the Fox and Hams, you know, near, near where the Oaklands and the convent was. So that's why I was questioning whether it was actually referring to the Ladybridge Roundabout or the Stakes Hill.
No, it's definitely, definitely Stakes Hill. The deal is that as part of obviously doing the development, that's one of the kind of external infrastructure bits that we provide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, councillor Reed, did you want to come back on that?
No, Chair, just to say thank you for the, for the update. The Ladybridge Roundabout was initially the development transport passage on to the new Western Waterlooville, but that seemed to have got abandoned very early days on. But thank you anyway.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Crichton.
Thank you, Chairman. If I can just clarify, what is referred to here is in fact the junction of Stakes Hill Road, Stakes Road and Crookhorn Lane. In other words, coming down from the Ladybridge Roundabout down Purbreath Way, we already have had the works done at the end of College Lane, where the new traffic lights have gone in. What is outstanding is that for the junction between the London Road and the motorway, where, as I say, those roads join. Now, it's a particularly bad junction. It is a roundabout at the moment. And the whole purpose of this exercise is to provide something which will give a proper flow of traffic. I understand there have been objections from residents at some of the proposals, that this is another matter that seems to be dragging on interminably. But if anybody is not clear about the location, have a look on the map. It is, as I say, the junction of where Stakes Hill Road comes into Stakes Road and then goes across into Crookhorn Lane.
Thank you so much. That's appreciated. So, oh, who's that?
Yeah, that clarifies it for me.
Councillor Patel.
Oh, thank you. Yes, councillor Patel, over to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just to, just to back what councillor Crichton has just mentioned, that junction gets very, very busy during the morning because it's access to two schools on one side and one another school on the, on the right-hand side. So in the mornings and in the evenings when school finishes, that is a source of contention in terms of traffic. So that does need looking. There, there used to be a filter lane that goes off to Stakes Road, but that filter road lane has been closed off for some time now. The reason being, I think there was one accident many years ago, and I think it was a fatality, I'm not sure. And that's the reason they closed that off. But it's, it's a waste of space there and it could be utilised to alleviate the traffic.
Thank you. That's appreciated. So Jenny, you've heard the comments and may I ask you or urge you to keep going with discussions with Hampshire County Council on this and come back to the forum and let us know of progress, if any, please?
Yes, absolutely. I'll keep you updated.
That's most kind of you. Thank you so much indeed. Any more hands, Clare? Any more questions?
No more hands at the moment, Chair, no.
Right. Well, thank you, Jenny, and I hope you'll stay with us to listen to the rest of the meeting. So I'll move on to agenda item seven, which is the arts programme update, report number WWF119, and it is found on pages 15 to 22 of your agenda pack. And so I'm going to hand over to Andrew Gostello and Steve Lincoln, who are both present this evening, to introduce the paper. Thank you so much. Oh, no!
Councillor Thompson.
I am so sorry. My sincere apologies. Councillor Thompson, our cabinet member for business and culture, what am I thinking of? May I hand over to you, dear lady? Do you introduce the paper? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Clare. And thank you for allowing me to come and present this paper. And I won't say too much about it because everyone on this call, I'm sure, knows a lot about the Arts Fund and the progress that it's made so far. But obviously, it's a paper that I'm presenting, it's got my name on it, so I felt that I needed to say a few words. Basically, I'm asking the forum to note four recommendations. And one is up to 20% of the section 106 Public Art Fund to be deployed to provide the necessary resources to lead a review and ongoing delivery of the Public Art Fund Programme. Collaboration with appropriate stakeholders to review the existing programme and develop a revised costed public art programme, and for managing the remaining period of the development, which will be presented to the forum at a future meeting. And thirdly, and really very importantly, because we are dealing with quite a large amount of money here, the government's arrangements for the Public Art Programme as outlined in section 11 of the report. And finally, the soft landscaping to the gateway installation will be undertaken, deploying a suitable tree species in order to align more closely with the original concept. I know that there, there is a little bit of concern about the up to the 20% of the fund being deployed to sort of get this underway. The difficulty we have on the city council is, of course, we would love to manage it ourselves, but we just don't have the resources to do that in-house. So if it's going to get managed effectively and we have a proper review, then it really, we have to find a commission, somebody outside to do that. And obviously, that's what this report is, is asking for your, your agreement, if you like, to that. I won't say anything else. I don't know whether Mister Gostello wants to add anything. But happy to take questions from members.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Thompson. Very much appreciated. Mister Gostello, would you like to come in now on this one, please?
No, Chair, at this stage, nothing to add, obviously. The forum have seen the paper, so very happy to field any questions or queries or discussion, debate in connection with it.
Lovely. I'll just ask Mister Lincoln if he has anything to say before I move into questions then. Mister Lincoln, do you have anything to add?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. So I'm going in members to questions. Any questions, please, on the paper?
Yes, no hands raised at the moment. Oh, sorry, councillor Reed.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Well done.
Thank you, Chairman. Since we set up the arts group, things have obviously changed in the sense that a new parish council has been formed. How much has the parish council been involved in this proposal, please?
I think the parish council has been councillor Crichton, I am correct, am I not, that you attended meetings with us quite recently?
Uh, yes, Chairman, that is, that's correct. Um, we have, as I was going to say, some spasmotic involvement in the arts plan of the programme at the moment. Um, we have indicated as a parish that we do want to see some progress being made. And I'm not sure whether it's mentioned in the report, but we did raise at the last meeting the question of whether there was any further funding that was going to be available. It wasn't clear at that time whether external or anything further from any extension to the development. In particular, I'll just make a point that the uh so far, we've actually failed to deliver anything as far as the arts programme is concerned. Um, this is not a particularly good situation to be in. My understanding is that the um the Gateway Project or the little Stargate that sits up at Milk Lane is likely to be something that we can achieve fairly quickly, putting the idea of planting trees round it to grow into a ring. But also, there is a strength of feeling in the parish council that the boat project, the grow your boat, is something that we would like to see going ahead if it is possible to find the financing for it. A lot of expectations were raised in the community about this project. Fortunately, we've had no mutterings recently, but if nothing happens on that, I think it will be a great disappointment.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. Um, Mr. Costello, do you wish to comment on um the comments you've just heard, please?
Yes, absolutely. No, no problem, Chair. And just to reiterate that certainly as officers, our intention would be to continue to collaborate with the parish council and develop that collaboration, collaboration particularly during the course of the development of the revised um public arts programme going forward. In connection with the um with the ring um uh at the gateway, as councillor Crichton said, we are looking um into um some soft planting around around that area and would look to move that forward quite quickly. In terms of the boating lake, that will form part of the review um that we will undertake. There are some risks um uh contained around um that particular project that needs to be fully explored. But that will be part of the review and, of course, we would consult uh with the parish council over that in due course.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And may I just say or reiterate that I would appreciate if you do keep the parish council in the loop with all things and consult with him as as much as possible, please.
Indeed, Chair, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Councillor Cutler.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I've chaired the arts panel since um twenty nineteen and there has been no action. And the main reason there has been no action is that initially the costs were escalating, the cost of consultants was escalating and the governance of the boat project was clearly not be not good, I suppose. And we cannot, there is no blame attached to it for Granger, who held the funds at the time. It was just the whole mechanism that was in place was not working. Um, Covid intervened. The administrative assistant to the um to the arts panel left the council. And so it's really important we get um back on track with this. Um, I'm disappointed that we're allocating quite so much to, but I I recognise that's a maximum and I think do think we need to monitor. But I do think ultimately we are going to have to um spend the money on the resource to make sure this is delivered efficiently. On the boating project, I understand parish councils concerned. The parish council have been involved in the arts panel all the time that I have been involved with it and have attended every meeting. The 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 prob, you know, one of the things I would like to see is whatever whether we use um an agency or whether we employ someone part-time, I think it's really important that one of their roles should be looking to see if there is other funding we can add to this. Not only internally, I mean, there could be an argument that if there are more houses built, there should be a little bit more contribution. But but also whether there are other grants that could be made available or could be could be sought for this. But at the point we were at, the costs have escalated on the boat project to such a level that there would have been no money for anything else. And ongoing maintenance could have been very, very expensive for the parish council. So it definitely needs a a review to decide what is the most appropriate way of going forward. And I can't see any other option than to use some of that fund to employ someone to do the work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Any comments regarding councillor Cutler's comments? Anybody wish to? Andrew or Steve, anything for you to add to that? I think councillor Cutler is quite correct in what he's saying.
Sorry, Chair, my camera is a little bit slow at coming into into action. Um, yeah, we're just to, yeah, just to sort of note councillor Cutler's comments um in terms of um obviously understanding the the need for the resource, um but the the level of the resource being required and as we and to reiterate, it is a maximum of of twenty percent. Um, the research that um Emeline Hickman has undertaken, who's our new Culture and Creative Officer um at the council, has indicated that informally from the research that we've done, it ranges between ten and twenty percent. But of course, if we do um follow the agency route, which possibly is more likely as it as it offers us more flexibility, A to get the original, the initial review done and then to be flexible, um having resource to deliver particular projects as contributions contributions come forward, we would, of course, um pursue the usual procurement policies of the city council and ensure that we obtain best value wherever we can in terms in terms of that.
Lovely.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. That is appreciated. Any more questions, please, regarding this paper? Um, as I said, and I agree, I think we need to monitor, definitely needs a review and please keep the parish council up to date. I'm sure you will, but I I like them to be notified of what's going on. That would be lovely. And so then, if there are no more questions regarding this, may I ask that the forum that we note the recommendations, one to four, if that's um okay with all members? And um then just to thank councillor Thompson, much appreciated. Sorry, I forgot you on my list. Our most sincere apologies. Thank you, Mr. Costello, as well for your input. So if that's all right with members, I take it it is. I don't see any.
There's no hands.
No hands. Um, we are all working lovely this evening. Thank you so much. I will then move on to item agenda eight, the local plan consultation. This is a verbal up update. And I think our first person to speak is Mr. Ailing tonight to introduce. So over to you, sir. Is he here? Is Mr. Ailing?
He is, just coming in now, Chair.
Hi, thank you. Sorry to keep you all waiting and and thank you very much for having me this evening. So I'm here just to flag really the the start of the Winchester City Council Local Plan Consultation and just to say a very few brief words on it, as I'm sure many of you will be hearing much more about it over the coming weeks as we roll out our our promotion and community engagement work for it. But this is uh, the aim is to completely refresh the local plan as it stands for Winchester District. Uh, the consultation takes the form of a full draft plan that's being published for public comment. And it will set out proposed policies on the full range of planning issues that you would imagine. And I will just highlight two changes from previous approaches, which are, we're now looking at improving the building standards that will be um employed on further housing development within Winchester District and increased emphasis on design as well as a refresh, if you like, of our other planning approaches. It also includes proposals for new development sites and reviewing development of larger sites, including most importantly for this meeting, West Waterloville. We've been in discussions with developers of the remaining parcels of land within Winchester District and how it's going and whether whether the timing and nature of what's being delivered is still going to be um in line with, if you like, the existing adopted plan and proposals. And they, we feel that we have the evidence to confirm, first of all, that West Waterloville will be delivered over the plan period for the plan we're talking about now, which is to twenty thirty-nine. But there also evidence is going forward that there is potential capacity for delivery of another two hundred and fifty homes on the Winchester part of the West of Waterloville development. And it's important that we understand and capture this, if it is appropriate and deliverable, that it is part of the overall development strategy for the for the Winchester area to ensure that all those available sources of housing are properly accounted for. Now, at present, it's envisaged that this would be um require a review of the master plan for West Waterloville and obviously be consequently be taken to the forum and and discussed there in due course. But we're some way away from that at this point. At this point, we are talking about taking the plan out to consultation, considering the implications of this in and the cumulative impact with other proposed developments. And very importantly, of course, any consequential infrastructure requirements arising from that. So this is a first draft plan. It's envisaged that we will consider all the responses we received and come back out with a second proposed submission plan next year in light of the responses. But this is obviously where there is most um potential to make changes in many ways. So we are asking everyone to uh respond as they see fit. In terms of where we where we're at, um, the the consultation itself starts tomorrow and runs for six weeks to the fourteenth December. Full details are online and we're going out for consultation and to notify people in the in the usual way. Hard copies of key documents are in libraries, the most closest to which of you there are Bishop's Waltham and at Waterloville Library and indeed at Haven. We are having a number of local plan events, the nearest of which is at Bishop's Waltham on the eighteenth November. And there is also a briefing for all Winchester parishes on the fifteenth November. So I'm happy to provide those, a quick note on those details to to Claire, should you wish, Chair, to circulate as a result of this meeting. But really, it's just to highlight that consultation will be underway as of tomorrow and the hard copies of the key documents will be in libraries tomorrow morning, once I've dropped off the last in Waterloville first thing. So thank you.
Sorry, Chair, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mr. Ailing. And if you could pass things to Claire to send out it would be most appreciated. Um, I have two hands raised. I will ask councillor Reed and councillor Crichton. They've obviously got questions for you. And then I believe Mr. Hayward from Haven, you're going to come in on um this agenda item this evening. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, Chair, absolutely, though happy to wait if there's any questions on the Winchester local plan first.
Thank you. That's most kind. So I'll take councillor Reed and then councillor Crichton. Thank you. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chair. It's just with regards to any additional developments under the um West Waterloville heading. Would this be covered by the original section 106? Or would it require a new 106 specifically dealing with those particular uh locations?
Yep, thank you. Mr. Ailing.
Thank you, yes. The plan is silent on that point at the moment, councillor, because I believe we would envisage it would be a more um self-contained um in terms of its assumption of the infrastructure requirements of cost arising from it. So there may not be that need to reopen that overarching section 106 agreement. So but the plan is silent on that at the moment as we are keeping our options open on that score. If if uh the foreign parties or indeed county or Haven Borough wish to make a particular comment on that approach and how we do not specify how we're going to deliver that at the moment, then obviously this is the opportunity for them to do so because we've got a year to sort this out before we finalise the plan to go to a public examination.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Crichton.
Thank you, Chair. Um, a couple of points that I might make or questions to ask Mr. Ailing. And thank you very much for introduction on that. Two hundred and fifty properties, we were notified that it was going to take place without any consultation on that. Though we do have regular meetings with Granger when we will be discussing one of the issues that's arising from this, which is exactly where, within the master plan, we could provide two hundred and fifty extra properties. And that does present a certain uh concern with some of the areas because the point about the development is the proportion of open space that we wish to keep within it. And as you're well aware, we're working through a very detailed plan that was made many years ago. The second point is that the addition of those properties, while we can probably accommodate them, will require a subsidiary planning application because we will have exceeded the number that were allowed in the original consent. Can you just confirm that that is the case? And the last point I want to raise is to ask you a question in relation to facilities within the development. I think that Mr. Hayward may mention when he's talking about Haven's local plan the fact that Haven have made a commitment for any new properties which have um off-street parking. And that will include, if it goes ahead, um a part of what is called the Blue Star Site next to the house station, which is immediately adjacent to our development, that all of those properties will have the infrastructure and the facilities for electric vehicle charging. I've raised this matter a number of times at previous meetings and with developers, but to date I've had no response from anybody which indicates that we are intending to provide this as part of the development. And even if legislation is passed nationally which requires it, the approach would be to retrofit it. My concern, as I'm sure you will understand, is if there is a requirement to do that, the infrastructure really needs to be in place before we start development. And the question arises about the properties that are already built. Could you enlighten me on that?
Thank you, Mr. Ailing.
Yes, certainly. I can answer those three points. So I hope councillor bears with me that they are, they will be in many ways quite general in nature, which reflect the fact that we're still at that first draft stage of the plan. But I'll give my thoughts on on the response to each of those points. The first of which was um, where are these two hundred and fifty houses going to go if if there if that is indeed achievable? The plan itself outlines um how it is envisaged at this point they will be delivered. And that is through, first of all, revisions to the estimated capacity of various phases so that each individual parcel may be able to deliver more, though I take the point the councillor mentioned about it, ensuring that we achieve the right level of open space and the quality development that has been achieved to date. The other point that is raised in the local plan in terms of how we deliver it is development of land reserved but no longer needed, we were advised by the county, for expansion of the primary school. So that's an important thing to consider and work through as we go. And the third uh bullet point I have here is changes within the local centre or other areas. That is how it's articulated in the plan, councillor, general in tone, I would I would say, and would need refinement and confirmation that everyone was comfortable that it could be delivered in the right way before we finalise the plan. But that's what the plan is saying to date in terms of in terms of how we can deliver that. The second point was about the original consent, and I'm extremely conscious that others have been working on the the consenting side of this. the consenting side of this for some time. So I would have to confirm this in writing to you, and would be happy to do so with the next working day or two. But I would imagine, if I would say so, no, I imagine this may well need an additional planning consent, but I would like to confirm that point and come back to you with that, just in case I get caught out, councillor. I hope you bear with me. And the last thing I wanted to raise was about facilities and off-street, sorry, the charging, if you like, ensuring the charging of electric vehicles. We are on a point of this in national policy. Certainly for this draft plan, it's encouraging the delivery of electric charging points, but it is not a requirement, as I understand it at the moment, because we don't feel we can go that far. That national picture may change by the time we get this plan to the next stage next year. Who knows? If not, we shall be doing our best to encourage and get, if you like, the most capacity of electric charging in our new development as we go. This is very much in line with the council's concern over climate emergency and what we can do for that. So there's no hard and fast requirement in the plan for electric charging in all cases at the moment, but we hope we can get there should the evidence and the national picture enable that to do so. So what I guess I would say is if people feel that that is of benefit, as I imagine they might, it would be helpful if they were to respond to this consultation in that manner to help to continue to make the case for that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ailing. That's fine. I'll wait to hear your responses on those. Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. I must keep an eye on that. Toby, Mr Ailing, thank you so much. If you could keep councillor Crichton up to date, that would be lovely. Thank you. Councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I think, again, thank you, Toby, for your presentation. But of course, we've got to remember that this particular site, the West Waterloiville, is a site that is shared between Haven Borough Council and Winchester City Council. We've now heard the Winchester City Council element, where it hopes to take on 250 additional properties. Of course, we've got to wait for, I presume, David, to tell us about the Haven element.
Yeah, I'm just going to welcome Mr Hayward to come in and give us an update, if that's okay. But I'll take councillor Cutler first. Sorry, Mr Hayward, two seconds. Councillor Cutler, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I do think it's an important aspect of this, sort of, looking at the master plan again, is the fact that, you know, the master plan is quite old now, and circumstances have changed quite dramatically. And it may be more about the mix of housing to increase the numbers, rather than, you know, the absolute capacity. You know, we might need more two-bedrooms and less four-bedroom, to put it simply. So I think it's really important that we have a review of the master plan as part of this process. It needn't be a, you know, sort of a completely comprehensive view, but I think we do need to recognise that the world has moved on quite a long since the master plan was originally adopted. So it would be very useful to look at it.
Thank you so much. Appreciated.
Oh, you just take my hand down.
I was going to say, that's a hand before. So I'm going to go over to you now, Mr Hayward. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, Chair. And as Toby said also, from our side, thank you very much for the opportunity to give a little bit of an update on the new local plan for Haven Borough. It's interesting in a way that the two authorities are at a sort of similar place, at least in terms of the regulation, slightly different approach, which I'll come on to, but it will hopefully make for a more coordinated strategic planning, the fact that the two authorities are progressing at not dissimilar timeframes. So Haven Borough Council has recently commenced production of a new local plan entitled Building a Better Future. There are a number of issues that the local plan is aiming to address, sort of overall throughout the borough, but one that I'd like to particularly highlight in terms of this particular forum. There is a growing housing need and a growing population, which obviously needs to be accommodated. Values in Haven Borough are lower than the Hampshire average, the South East average, and that often means that new housing is out of the reach of a number of our residents. That creates a significant need for affordable housing as part of that overall mix. And it also means that the amount of planning gain that is then available for affordable housing, low-carbon design, biodiversity net gain, all of those things which planning authorities wish to see as part of new developments are harder to achieve in Haven Borough compared to a lot of our neighbours and nearby authorities. We also have relatively high car dependency, potentially a sort of reflection of the suburban expansion of Haven, particularly to the west of the A3M, where there is no rail access to rail infrastructure. And in the new plan, we're very much looking to reflect and follow Hampshire County Council's emerging Local Transport Plan Four. That also, by implication, leads to fairly high per capita carbon emissions. And again, as Toby said, I think in relation to the Winchester plan, similarly Haven looking to address that through the new plan and opportunities to go further than building regulations in terms of low-carbon design. The particular issue that I thought would be very pertinent to highlight within this forum is that Haven is very constrained as a planning area. It's relatively small, a lot of constraints. In some ways, I always think Haven is almost more similar to Portsmouth in terms of the constraints that it faces than a lot of our neighbours and nearby authorities. And there are very limited sites in the borough. The previous local plan, which was withdrawn from examination in March, just about met housing need. It provided a small surplus, but nothing very significant, only a few hundred new homes. The new local plan inevitably will not be able to meet housing need. That need has gone up from 516 per year. The plan period will need to be extended, and the supply, if anything, will be less than the last plan. So there will be an inevitability in engaging the duty to cooperate and looking to neighbouring and nearby local authorities in order to help address that need for housing. That will obviously be primarily through the partnership of South Hampshire's work on the new joint strategy, but it will also be necessary, I think, to have a sort of bilateral statement of common ground between Winchester and Haven, which I would suggest would be needed to support both local plans as they move forward, particularly towards examination. As I said, we're at a similar stage to Winchester in terms of the regulatory side of things. It's a Regulation 18 consultation, as planners like to say, but the approach is a little bit different. It's not a full draft plan, so there are no sites or specific proposals in there. The consultation is a discussion document around sort of three key, sorry, three key themes, around how much development should take place, the pattern of that development and the quality of it. Within each of those themes, there's various categories, climate change, density regeneration and the like. And that's all set out in a discussion document that's available on the website and at libraries and community centres, notably, of course, Waterloiville Community Centre and Waterloiville Library. But if you go to haven.gov.uk/localplan, you can click through to the main consultation website and access all of the relevant documents. We've had a series of exhibitions across the borough. The latest was today at our offices, but the last of which is this Thursday at Emsworth from 3pm to 7pm. So if you haven't yet had the opportunity to look through the information and would like to ask us any questions, obviously can within this forum, but if you want to have a more detailed discussion perhaps, feel free to come along to Emsworth. And please ensure that any comments are submitted by the consultation deadline, which is midnight on the 14th. But as I said, happy to answer any questions that there may be. I see there's a couple of hands up.
Mr Hayward, that's kind of you. I appreciate you coming along this evening and giving us that update. So I'm going to take councillor Reed first. Thank you, councillor Reed.
First of all, thank you, David, for your presentation. Would I be right in thinking, then, that you're the stage behind a Reg 18?
No, it is Regulation 18, but it's, I suppose, because Regulation 18 is a very loosely worded regulation. It is simply that a local planning authority must engage on the preparation of a local plan. So I suppose it's a slightly different approach to Winchester. Obviously, we have a local plan which was withdrawn from examination. That local plan's consultation was fairly site-focused, so this time it's a little bit different and trying to focus on those key themes that I sort of outlined and elicit more response on those sorts of matters rather than sites explicitly.
Could I therefore ask, what is the timeline on your plan?
Of course. We're looking to, in planning speak, the Regulation 19 consultation, that pre-submission consultation, i.e. consultation on the plan which the authority considers to be sound. That would be next winter, i.e. the winters of 2023, 2024, submission to the Secretary of State, then the following spring, and, all being well, adoption a year later.
So 2025 for possible adoption?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Crichton?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, good to see you, David. We've spoken in the past, but this is the first time we see each other. Can I just ask, specifically in relation to the developments, there is one phase remaining which will be entirely within Haven, which I'm sure as far as Park View is Phase 10, I think, on the London Road. Have you any intention of looking for any change or increase in the number of properties there as part of the Haven local plan, which will then have to come into the general discussion as far as the development is concerned?
In reality, in practical, in practical terms, no, because that would be a reserve matters application associated with an outline. So the outline sets the principle of development. I think I would agree with previous comments that, you know, the master plan is a little old at this point. It doesn't perhaps reflect, well, actually, it was approved before, any MPPF, it wasn't it, but certainly the latest MPPF, shall we say. One of the themes that is explored within the discussion document is around density and the need to reflect the latest MPPF and boost densities across the board, but particularly in those more accessible areas, not just accessible areas, areas where people can genuinely live without access to private car, Waterloiville Town Centre and its environs being very much within that. I would say if we were looking at West Waterloiville afresh, yes, there probably would, we would be looking at a slightly different approach than what has transpired. But it's sort of information available at the time and the planning context at the time. The remaining phases that come forward in line with the outline come forward in line with the outline. There are sites in and around Waterloiville where, yes, we'd look for a different approach, but the MDA as it is would not be one of them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. Claire, do I have?
Yes, councillor Berry. Thank you.
Oh, I apologise. Councillor Berry, thank you.
Thanks very much. I've seen all these plans and that, and we've got people in Denmead, people in Newlands, people in Waterloiville and Haven who can't afford affordable housing. And that's all the councils, Winchester, Haven, Portsmouth, Southampton are saying, affordable housing. What about social housing? There's nothing ever really raised about that. And the amount of people that are on the waiting list is terrible. So what's the comments on that, please?
We'll ask both the officers. We'll do councillor, Mr Hayward first. Mr Hayward, thank you.
I suppose in short, couldn't agree with you more. There is a differentiation, at least as far as us planners would say, between housing affordability and affordable housing in terms of a definition within the National Planning Policy Framework. And within that MPPF definition, there is the affordable rented products and the intermediate products, the kind of part rent, part sale. However, social rented products are within there. It's generally not something which we see coming forward very much, because it has more of a development viability impact than the other ones. However, I obviously can't speak for Toby in the situation in Winchester, there is, as you say, a very high housing waiting list in Haven. The waiting times for affordable housing products are also very significant. They vary greatly depending on the type of product that a household would be looking for, but particularly the larger products. They can be approaching a decade, which effectively means that by the time that a household is eligible, sorry, by the time a household is able to access a property that they are eligible for, they probably don't need that size of product anymore. So it is something that I couldn't agree with you more, that there is a need to address. One thing which we're specifically asking about through the consultation, one reason that it's a discussion document, is to ask about priorities. Now, the amount of what we call planning gain, that sort of ability of developers to provide us with things that aren't strictly speaking required under the MPPF to literally sort of pass go, but are elements that make schemes a lot better. As Toby said, good design, that's the basic, but low-carbon design above building regulations, that's something which we do not have to do, but it is something which the MPPF allows us to go higher than the building regulations on. So we're asking respondents to tell us what the priority should be. Should it be affordable housing and devoting more of that sort of planning gain towards affordable housing? Should it be infrastructure and SIL? Should it be biodiversity net gain? Should it be low-carbon design? Those are sort of the main areas where we can look to go above the national minimum. But because of the values in Haven particularly, we certainly can't have everything. And that's just the honest truth, unfortunately. So that's why we're asking what the priority should be.
Thank you, sir. Mr Ailing, do you want to come in and add anything to that, please?
Well, I would want to contradict Mr Hayward. I guess all I can do is give a little more information with Winchester, because we are a little further down that line of thinking about things than where Haven is. So councillor, what Winchester members have been really looking at is where is that balance between affordable housing and what you may get out of that pot, if you want to achieve things like higher building standards, more energy efficient housing, and still pay for things that we all have to pay for now that we didn't have to pay for, certainly when West Waterloiville started, which is things like nitrates, and in Winchester we have phosphates to fund as well. There is, in planning terms, there is only so much funding available. Winchester's approach in this plan is to go for significantly higher building standards while still achieving 40% affordable housing on greenfield sites. However, I do absolutely sympathise with the comments he's making about the fact that, in many ways, social rented housing is called a superior product because it actually costs less to rent and rents are held lower. But across many authorities, including these two that we're discussing here, Haven at Waterloiville, sorry, Haven to Winchester, it tends to be affordable rent, which is 80% of values, rather than social rent, which is 60%, which people go for, with the expectation that those who cannot make that fully themselves can receive that top to top through some other mechanism and benefits and all the rest of it. But this is not an ideal situation. But Winchester's view on this is that these building standards will improve the quality of all new development across the plan period in Winchester, and therefore that's a price worth, you know, worth placing quite a lot of across the plan period in 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 Winchester, and therefore that's a price worth, you know, worth play placing quite a lot of weight on. So that's how the approach that we are developing is taking shape.
Thank you, Mr Ailing, and thank you both once again. Much appreciated. I hope councillor Barry, that might have answered or helped your question in some way. So I hope it did.
It did, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions please?
No more hands at the moment Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, once again, Mr Hayward, Mr Ailing, I appreciate you coming along with your verbal update on the local plan and it's a delight to see, I must admit, so many Haven't officers here this evening, and I thank you so much for that. So I'm going to move on to item nine, which is any other business. Now, may I ask, is Mr Downton here from Haven?
Mr Downton is is present, yes.
How lovely, because I was going to ask Mr Downton under any other business if he could give us an update on Haven Borough Council's Waterlooville Town Centre regeneration work, sir, is that possible? But before you do, councillor Reed and councillor Creighton, can your questions just wait until Mr Downton's done his update for me? Is that all right?
Yep.
Yep, lovely. Thank you so much. So Mr Downton, welcome sir. And if you would please give us help us to tell us about Waterlooville Town Centre regeneration work. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yes, good afternoon. So officers are now completing an outline draft plan and timeline to progress regeneration in Waterlooville. Basically, this incorporates a number of different factors. One is short term measures to improve the physical appearance and fabric of the town centre. Another element, obviously, built building on the local plan is to engage with residents, public businesses, commercial owners, partners and stakeholders, which will include your good selves. And then from that, it's to develop a deliverable master plan and vision for the town centre, including a consultation process and communications plan with a commitment for this to be completed by June twenty twenty three.
Right, lovely. Councillor Reed or councillor Creighton, do you wish to ask anything of Mr Downton regarding that or are you happy?
Nothing to add to that. Just look forward to the publication.
Okay, lovely. Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr Downton please at this present time? No, I don't think so, but as councillor Reed said, he looks forward sir to the publication and thank you so much, Mr Downton. That was very much appreciated.
Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you. So I'm still with any other business. So councillor Reed, thank you.
Thank you Chair. There's a question really aimed towards Steve Lincoln. I think he knows what I'm going to ask. And it's basically about the section one oh four, one oh six agreements that are outstanding, which is causing a certain amount of confusion and concern with regards to the handover of the open space to the Newlands Parish Council. Could he give us just a quick update as to where we are? It does seem to be dragging one's feet on this one because it was Winchester City Council that well over a year ago was asking the parish council, could we take it over as a parish? Of course, we're now waiting for legal problems which still haven't been resolved over twelve months later.
Yep.
I see.
Yeah, thank you councillor Reed. So Mr Lincoln, over to you please.
Yeah, evening councillor Reed. Yeah, we haven't really moved forward a huge amount in the last month or two. Part of the problem being that we were trying to make, the issue we have, and I think you know this, but for the benefit of other members of the forum, is there's an outstanding drainage issue in relation to Newlands, Newlands Walk, which needs resolving before the land can be transferred to the parish council. Certainly, I don't, I don't suspect the parish council would want the land with the the issue remaining outstanding, so it's in everyone's interest to get it resolved first. The the person who we were trying to contact from Taylor Wimpy to try and move this forward, it seems as retired. And I only came, became aware of that the other day when I spoke to David, I corresponded with David Creighton about it, who was aware of that. I wasn't aware of it. So so I've, I've now, sorry.
Can I just say, I'll reply to your email and give you the contact details.
Yes, great. Thank you David. So so I've I've corresponded again with David today and hopefully we can sort of start to move that forward. I suspect it will still take a little time because there's, there's some legal agreements that need to be be undertaken and completed and and those never happen quickly. But but suffice to say, we are trying to move it forward as quickly as possible. Yeah, councillor Reed's absolutely right that I think the city council was sort of trying to move this forward and encouraging the parish council to agree to take it on. I think that's because, you know, we all recognise that the parish council is the right, the right place for the responsibility for the open space to sit. In the meantime, you know, the good news in the meantime is that, you know, the city council will be looking after it, making sure, making sure it's well, well maintained, well looked after. So there'd be no problem in that regard. But I know the parish council, for a number of reasons, is is keen to get it sort of moved forward. Like I say, hopefully, in correspondence with councillor Creighton, we can, we can sort of start making some progress on that and and get things moved forward.
Thanks Steve. So may I ask, you know, I know Newlands Parish Council would love to get going on it. So may I ask you to keep on the ball with this? And I'm sure David would help as well because he has a few contacts and thank you. Councillor Reed.
Can I just do a supplementary if I may?
Yeah.
This is actually starting to highlight a problem that we may get later down the line with regards to any properties or any parcels of land that are going to be open space within the Granger element. Now, the Granger element is very much affected by the boundaries of our two districts. And whilst we have a problem within the Winchester area, I think we're possibly going to have a much greater problem if we don't ask members to gather together to try to iron this particular thing out. Because at the moment Winchester, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Winchester are looking after any monies that come forward from Granger with regard to open space, which I believe may include the Haven element. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way I see it at the moment. And I think we're going to have to get together, well, hopefully get together in the not too distant future with our colleagues on a face to face to discuss the way ahead for any land that is shared. Now, if you look at the town park, fifty percent of the town park lies in one district and fifty percent in the other. If the parish council took the town park on, after twenty years, it would only actually look after one half of it.
Yeah.
Because of the, so this is why it is imperative, I would say to my colleagues across the boundaries, that we do gather together and discuss exactly the way forward that is going to be the advantage of not only Newlands, but obviously of the Haven residents that fall within the new development of West of Waterlooville.
Yeah, good points. Yeah, good points made there Steve. So you wanted to come back? Yeah, I know. Carry on.
Yep, only only to say thank you Chair. That is a, is a very, very good point councillor Reed makes. I don't think that the particular challenge we're facing with the Newlands Walk piece of open space is necessarily one that would be repeated. But it's a very, very fair point that the challenges of the the land, particularly the land that crosses the the boundaries, is one that we ought to have a think about early. So leave that with me to take away. I'll speak to the colleagues in my team who deal with our open space in Winchester. And we will try to pull together some conversations so that we can have an early, early discussion around that, so that our approach to all of that is agreed ahead of time.
Appreciated. Thank you so much.
And I take it that is going to be with Rick Smith at this point in time as an interim?
Yeah, so Rick, Rick and Stuart Dunbar Dempsey, who obviously deals with the the sort of day to day works around the 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 new land and the adoption. So so yeah, that's right councillor Reed, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
So if you you could keep us all in the loop as well Steve, thank you. That would be appreciated. Thank you councillor Reed. Councillor Creighton, I think you're next sir. Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Can you, can you actually see me?
I can see you, yes.
That's fine. Okay. Right, if I can beg your indulgence, there are a number of matters that I wanted to raise, some of which actually go back to the minutes of the previous meeting.
Councillor Creighton, if so, I appreciate it. Yes, we will listen. But shall I take councillor Barry first then in case?
Please, if you would, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barry then please.
Yeah, two things is that Winchester are not looking after Newlands properly because we've been waiting for the person in charge of fly tipping to come and see us and they keep putting off. Now, my understanding that within Hampshire County Council and the area around the tip, they are supposed to pick up any rubbish from outside, but they're not doing that. And we're getting a lot of fly tipping down there. And though it's an adopted area, we were told that the fly tipping officer would come down and see us, but he hasn't. And my second point is, Newlands Walk, for over two years, I've been putting in complaints and asking for stuff to be done and they not being done. There is twenty five outstanding parts which need repairing and maintenance on, and yet Winchester has not come back to us and said, right, we'll come down, we'll speak to you on them and we will do the repairs. Some of them fall in the category of health and safety because of fencing coming down. So what is your comment on that please Steve?
Steve, can you comment on that?
I can only comment by saying I'm not aware of the specific, specific issues or the correspondence, but that does sit within my team. So does that relate, I'm assuming, does that relate to various bits of correspondence over over time councillor Barry?
Yes, and the last one was twenty five nagging snag points which I sent to Winchester through our clerk.
Okay, would you be good enough to forward that on to me personally?
Yes.
And and then then I can sort of take that up with colleagues in the team and find out sort of what's going on with that, where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councillor Barry, may I ask, when you, your clerk put them through, did she get a, an email or anything back acknowledging?
On some, they were looking into and and some, no.
Okay, thank you. Well, if you do, if you send it on to Steve, I'm sure he'll have a good look at it for you sir.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Right, councillor Creighton, over to you then.
Right, thank you Chair. First of all, can I, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, fine, thank you.
Sorry, my, the response is slow coming up on the screen. First of all, on behalf of Taylor Wimpy, I had a, I asked them for a report on progress and I've had some notes back from them today which do raise some concerns. First of all, the section one oh four agreement with Southern Water is not yet complete. And my understanding from previous discussions is this is because it's impossible to get hold of anybody at Southern Water to complete it. Taylor Wimpy, I believe, are ready to sign that. It does a knock on effect, as Steve Lincoln will be aware, in terms of other matters as well. So that is a matter of concern. And nothing is going to be done on remedial work until that section one oh four agreement has been signed. This is one of the matters that's holding up the first part of the road adoption, which is the spine road from the traffic lights on the Hambledon Road down to the bridge into Proxima Park and also down to the recycling centre. And that has been dragging on for some time. That's one of the main problems with it. The second is to do with lighting remedial work. As you'll be aware, some of the lighting within Wellington Park precedes the county's project to replace all the lighting across with the PFI project. And one or two of the lights which have to be made or fixed before highways will adopt it, still have the old heads on them. I don't want to bore people with details, but there is a long and protracted problem with this. And I'm told by Taylor Wimpy that they are having no success with Hampshire whatsoever on this matter. So if I could ask those who are in a position to do to try and jig this up, we would like to get that road adopted as soon as possible before and then they can move on to the rest of the estate. There's one other problem as well that's arisen, which many of you will be aware of, and I'll give you an update on. And that is that Taylor Wimpy have now got a contractor to complete the end of Sickle Way onto the Hambledon Road, which is the second access from the development, which was agreed by the original planning consultant. However, and that incidentally is due to be completed by the end of this year. Highways have instructed that at that point Sickle Way must be closed. I have raised this as an issue with councillor Stalard, who I'm very grateful to have taken this up. The point that we have made is not the closure itself, but the timing of it. Because until the rest of the development, the roads in the development are adopted, there are no controls on parking or any restrictions which will allow an easy passage of traffic through the development in once Sickle Way has been closed. And what we have asked is whether the closure can be deferred until the rest of the roads are completed. Councillor Stalard has passed back to me a reply from county, which is anonymised unfortunately, so I can't reply to it directly, which is totally unsatisfactory and completely misses the points that we raised. And I just want to say to her, so I will reply to her with a list of additional points, which I have discussed with other members of the parish council, which I hope will be taken up by county. But we do have a potentially a very difficult situation. If the road, Sickle Way is closed at this point, without any of the other roads being made up, we are likely to have a major problem with traffic on the estate. So I simply want you to note that. The second thing I wanted to ask in relation to Wellington Park is that the Haven part of the open space, as far as I know, has not yet been adopted. This has been an ongoing matter for quite some years. And I noticed that the officer who was dealing with it, Martin Fennick, who at that time was an East Hans employee, is now, has moved to Haven and is now head of the estates department. So can I ask the Haven representatives if they can either give a reply now or chase up on this to find out what the situation is with that adoption? Because it is one of the major outstanding issues as far as Wellington Park is concerned. Right. The next point I want to raise, if I might, is in relation to the fact that I've discovered today, simply by looking at the Winchester website, that phase, what was phase three B, which is the second of the blower applications, which I raised at the last meeting as a matter for some urgency, because we have not taken this to the joint planning committee for approval, was in fact approved on delegated powers on the tenth of October without any notification to us whatsoever. And we now have a situation where we have our two phases, which have been approved on delegated powers. And can I therefore ask whether the joint planning committee still exists? If it does, under what circumstances will planning applications be taken to it? I don't expect an answer tonight on that, but I would expect an answer in the near future. Because if we are not going to go through that process, then it rather weakens the whole purpose of both this forum and the joint cooperation across the development. And I personally would have great difficulty in continuing to be involved in it whatsoever, if that's the case. The final point, if I might raise it, is that you'll be aware that I have raised previously with the Police and Crime Commissioner the question of policing across the development. And I think you're all aware of the fact that we do have this split policing whereby the Haven parts of the development are policed from Waterlooville and the rest of it from Bishopswaltham. We made a request through the Police and Crime Commissioner, which was passed on to senior officers, to ask whether we could have a single command for the whole area. The response at the moment is no, and this, as I'm sure many will appreciate, is because of the alignment of is because of the alignment of police boundaries with the district boundaries. But what in discussion with the PCC a couple of weeks ago was suggested is that we arrange a meeting with the senior officers in both of those jurisdictions. Because what is going to happen on the Bishopswaltham side is as the development increases, we will reach a point where Bishopswaltham is not able to provide the resources for policing that area. It's very much an analogy to why Newlands Parish Council was set up to avoid Southwick and Widley ending up with 5,000 residents rather than the 500 they have. So again, I will give notification on that, that we will be pursuing this and I'll report this back to future meetings of the forum. You're muted, Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Before I go through your questions, I'll just take councillor Reed first in case he wants to come in on any of those points that you raised. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chair. The only point I would like to just come in on is the fact that the process of delegation. I have spoken to Jackie Porter, who is the portfolio holder at Winchester, and have agreed that we need to review that process because when a boundary issue between, oh, sorry, a development to share between two authorities, I think it's terribly important that we use the joint facilities in order to ensure that we don't get a mishmash of development taking place. And she very much agreed with me and we hope to start to review that constitution in the not-too-distant future.
Oh, fine. Thank you councillor Reed, appreciated. I wondered if councillor Stalard at all wanted to come back on some of the comments councillor Crichton made regarding Hampshire County Council and highways. Councillor Stalard, are you with us still? I'm not sure if she is.
I'm just gonna just check. Councillor Stalard, are you present in the meeting?
No, don't think so.
No, I can't see that she is online any longer, Chair.
Councillor Crichton, I've made a note of all those comments and I'll get hold of councillor Stalard as well, sir, if that's all right with you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'll copy you in on my reply to councillor Stalard.
That's lovely, thank you. Mrs Pinnock, I see you're online. May I ask you about the application that went through under delegated powers and councillor Crichton's comments? Would it be possible for you to, oh, there she is, thank you. Would it be possible for you to comment on that, Mrs Pinnock?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Chair. The council's constitution sets out the scheme of delegation to your officers in partnership, in this case with Havant, on the joint committee. Oh, just pop up, come up on my laptop, forgive me, that was noisy. And this case didn't trigger a referral to the joint committee chair, so it was dealt with under delegated powers. Certainly, I know that this has been an issue councillor Reed and the parish council have raised. And I did try before the summer holidays to book up a meeting with the parish council to discuss the constitution and these matters, but we haven't been able to get a date in the diary at the moment, Chair. But these are delegated matters. They didn't trigger a committee referral. I did liaise with the Chair of Planning Committee, councillor Therese Evans, not particularly on this case, but more generally. And she was happy that these matters, if they don't trigger, would be dealt with under delegated powers. I would just add that we do work in partnership with Havant Borough Council, so we're not working in isolation. We would consult them as the adjoining local planning authority. We have a really close working relationship and I know I've said that at this meeting before. And I'm really satisfied that we do work together. The parish council, I believe, comment on all the planning applications. And I presume they would have commented on this one, Chair, as well, in common with others.
Okay, that's appreciated. Councillor Crichton, are you happy with that at the present time? Or would you like to arrange a date with Mrs Pinnock? As was going to happen earlier, but no date was set to have a meeting.
Yes, thanks. I would make clear that my comments are not a criticism of the planning staff on either authority with whom I've worked for quite some time. And I think councillor Reed has raised the point that there is, at the moment, there is a bit of a contradiction between the concept of the joint planning committee and the basis on which we understood it would work in relation to any major applications, whether they were in the Winchester or the Havant part, and those included the major phases. Now, with previous phases, phases 9A and 9B went to the joint committee and they weren't objected to beforehand, they were simply discussed there. So I think there is a need for clarification on this, simply so we know where it's going. And it really comes down to the question of whether, in a joint development, the final decisions are made by the councillors in all cases for a major development or whether they are delegated. So I appreciate the fact that this, as things stand at the moment, and councillor Reed was good enough to point out to me earlier today that the constitution in Winchester backs up entirely what Mrs Pinnock has said on this. We would simply like clarification on it so we know where we are with the remaining phases, as we have quite a number of these still to go through. And also bear in mind that there may be other applications coming in which are of interest to both. And in particular, if the application of the request for the new health centre is approved. And I understand that that is now more likely than not, that we need a bit of clarification. That is an application which would be built within Winchester but would be of particular interest to Havant because it would be replacing surgeries which basically serve Havant residents. So there are circumstances like that where I think it is going to be extremely important that we do go through a proper joint process at a councillor level of consideration. I'll simply make that as a comment and we'll see where we go to on it.
Thank you, Mr Crichton. Anything you wanted to add to that, Mrs Pinnock?
I think we're all on the same page here. I think I just reiterate that, you know, and as you know, we follow the council's constitution. But I would just say that all applications are publicly consulted and we do consult with our neighbouring authority at Havant. And we are all on the same page in terms of the developments. So even if they don't go to a joint committee for decision, we're not missing out in terms of that networking and making sure all those voices are heard. So I think I would just really want that, and I'm happy to come and meet you at Newlands and continue this dialogue. And I think that's something, you know, I'd be quite keen to do, Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
You're always welcome to come to our meetings. We're pleased to see you.
Thank you both very much. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I agree with what Julia has just said. However, one of the things as a district councillor, and I'm sure my colleagues across the boundary in Havant Borough Council must also remember, it was our undertaking as a joint body to integrate the communities. When we're not having meetings, exceedingly difficult to integrate because one, we've probably not met some of the members that are on the other side of the border. So it's a matter of face-to-face and being able to talk together and discuss together. And I think that right at the beginning of the West of Waterlville, and I'm probably the only one left on the committee that remembers that we had two planning committees meeting simultaneously to discuss applications on the other sites. This, we felt was rather silly and it was on that reason, and that reason alone of integration, that we formed the joint planning committee with the purpose of, as I say, trying to integrate the two communities. We are sadly failing on the undertaking that we made all those years ago. But I'm sure that if we can review this constitution, I'm sure we can find a joint way out of it.
Yeah. Appreciated, yes. And I'm sure, as Mrs, oh, geez, I'm, did you want to say something else, Mrs Pinnock?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just with your permission, I wanted to just point out that there's a slight difference, isn't there, in terms of a planning committee meeting, which is very formulaic and covers the planning issues of a case, compared to this forum where we're very much working cross-boundary, cross-party. Steve Lincoln with the community side of things, you've got Mark Maitland here, we've got officers from Havant, members from Havant as well. So I think, you know, this forum does, in my view, fulfil some of that. I'm not taking away the other conversation about the joint committee and that work, but I would just want to reiterate that's what this forum, the terms of reference of this forum are set out to do, aren't they? To bring that community together and lead on that. And I'd say Steve Lincoln, you know, is here very much to lead on that.
Actually, Mrs Pinnock, you picked me to the post because I was going to say that along those lines as well. I understand what councillor Reed is saying and I do appreciate that you have offered your time to come along to the parish council as well, which if you are available and you can get a date sorted, I think that would be a brilliant idea. But we are all working together. I think we do a lot on the forum. We get together lots and, as you say, all the officers are there. But I do understand what councillor Reed is saying, but I'm sure if we can get together and have a chat and Mrs Pinnock's willing to come along, that will help a lot. And I thank you all for those comments this evening. So Claire, are there any more questions or comments?
No more hands raised, Chair, no.
Well, if not, that just leaves me to say, so a big thank you to you all and it was lovely to see so many here this evening and so many giving their views and comments. Again, as we were saying, it's nice. We've kind of come together, Winchester, Havant, Grange, it's lovely and I thank you for that. But ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the formal business for this meeting. And as always, again, may I thank you for attending and I wish you all very well and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you and good night.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chair. Good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you all. Good night.
Night.